Four thirty.
Four thirty, thank you. It's four thirty, I want to call the meeting to order. Before we do anything, I want to welcome Commissioner Mike Blue. He'll be our commissioner for the next four years up here, and maybe longer. So, welcome, Mike, if you have any questions or concerns. We want all you guys to treat him decently, Steve, alright? If they don't, you come tell us, alright?
I ain't too worried.
Yeah, I'm too worried. But, welcome, welcome to the board. For public information, a copy of the Open Meetings Act is on the east wall of the boardroom. We'll call, please.
Meyer?
Here.
Harris?
Here.
Knapper?
Here.
Reizig?
Here.
Here.
Blue?
Here.
Okay, could we all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ken?
Yes?
I'm gonna, I've having trouble hearing Russ and Mike, just, and John's trying to record this for our YouTube channel, so, I need you guys to speak up.
Okay, did you tell them that, or you want me to?
You, pretty please.
She's having trouble hearing you two, so.
What'd she say? I'm not having trouble hearing her.
Kelly, 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 okay. Alright, next item is approval of the agenda, consider any modifications. Kelly, you have any changes to the agenda?
Once, I just want to determine if I put Mr. Blue's name on this, since he's a part of the decision for the minutes. Oh, I have no changes for the agenda, I'm sorry, no.
Thank you. Anybody else have any changes?
No.
Alright, I'll entertain a motion for approval.
I move approval of the agenda as presented.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Any discussion? Kirk, call and roll.
Harris?
Yes.
Reizig?
Yes.
Blue?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Knapper?
Yes.
Just want to remind everybody, the board does reserve the right to enter to a closed session, if necessary, anytime during this meeting. We do have one scheduled for the end of the meeting, but we do have the right to move into executive session, if necessary. Alright, first item on the agenda is our reorganization. First thing we need to happen is you need to find somebody to act as your chairman, your chairperson.
I would nominate Ken Meyer as chairman.
Second.
How many votes is it gonna take to get this done?
Fifteen.
Any other discussion? Uh, thank you, I, I'll do my best, I appreciate your confidence. Call and roll, please.
Knapper?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Blue?
Yes.
Reizig?
Yes.
Okay, the next item, I would like to, I would like to enter a motion to appoint Vice Chairman Mark Harris.
I'll second that.
There's a motion and a second, is there any discussion? Kirk, call and roll, please.
Meyer?
Yes.
Knapper?
Yes.
Blue?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Reizig?
Yes.
Okay, next item is to appoint representatives to serve on various boards and committees. Now, for those of you that weren't here, uh, it was done in an open meeting on the nineteenth of December, whatever it was, we had a meeting, and-
Yeah, you guys met at three that day.
And went through and explained what all the different committees were, got a consensus of who kinda wanted to do what, so it wouldn't take up everybody's time tonight, and we do have, unless somebody wants to change what it is that they're doing, I would entertain a motion to approve the list which was given to us tonight. I can go through that if anybody's interested, and, and name who's on what committee, uh, but if you don't feel it's necessary, we'll just, we'll just vote on it and go through with it. And, and a copy of this is available with, with Kelly, if anybody wants a copy, that they can look at, and see which board. And, and for those that aren't familiar with that, there are one, two, three, four, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, twenty, twenty-five, twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty-eight, twenty-nine, thirty, thirty-one, thirty-two, thirty-three. Thirty-four boards that we, as commissioners, sit on, besides doing this, and we, we split it up between all of this, and that's, that's what we did that night, is who, what? I can't get close enough. Is that better? I'm not gonna sit like this, though, so get used to me back here. I'll, I'll, I'll talk louder. Uh, so, anyway, with that, if any, unless anybody has a, wanna change something that we did, or you have, or you'd like to take one on that maybe somebody else took, and you'd like to have it, but that's not gonna happen either, I've already tried that. So with that, I would entertain a motion to approve the appointment to the boards and agencies that are right here.
I'll second it.
No, I'm just calling for a motion. Do you want to make the motion?
Sure, I made the motion that we-
Mike, Mike's making the motion, is there a second to the motion?
I'll second.
Is there any other discussion? Anybody have a change of heart? I'm giving you one more chance here. Okay.
Thank you, anyway.
Call and roll, please.
Blue?
Yes.
Knapper?
Yes.
Reizig?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes. Uh, next item is to appoint Commissioner liaison to the different elected, or appointed officials, and that again is included with all of this.
How many is on that one?
That one is, uh, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, sixteen, seventeen, different appointed officials.
So that's fifty-one little positions we're in right there.
What's that?
That's fifty-one little positions we're in all together.
Just a few more.
To that, we still got another page yet.
Yeah, oh yeah, we're not done yet.
No.
No, we're not finished, we have, we have more to do. Uh, but for those of you that aren't familiar with that, each, each of the commissioners, uh, is assigned, uh, a department head, and that's, we are the liaison for that particular department.
More than one.
Some, some are more than one, yeah. Uh, we're the ones that do the evaluations for them, if they have any issues, they can call us, and we try to work with them and keep things running smoothly. And, uh, so with, with that, I would entertain a motion to approve the list of the appointed officials. Again, this is available, if anybody's interested, they can certainly get a copy of it from Kelly.
I make a motion to approve the liaison list as presented.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any other discussion? Kirk, call and roll, please.
Reizig?
Yes.
Knapper?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Blue?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Okay. Well, you're, you're gonna be busy, Reizig.
I know, I see you, you're a lot, that's okay, it's alright. Is there nothing else to do?
I know, but, uh, next item is considered designation of the 2023 official county newspaper. And that's our decision. Anybody?
Well, it's, it's been the Star Herald, right?
Yes.
Uh, years ago, it used to be the Gearing Courier, but I think it was switched to the Star Herald, but anyway, I think the Star Herald has obviously the most circulation of any in the county.
Well, plus they're affiliated with the Courier now.
They own the Courier, don't they?
Right.
So we could make you the one.
So it's all-
Could make you the one.
Well, we could.
That's up to them, if they want to publish something, another paper, that's, that's their dime, not ours. They want, however placed, they want to publish it, as long as we have permission from the, from the clerk, or do that. Yes, Kelly?
Um, we skipped appointing our officials to their-
What?
No, we did that.
No, there's-
We appointed a-
Appoint officials to various offices.
We appointed the commissioners to appointed officials, but we didn't appoint the appointed officials.
Oh, so all these people?
Oh, well, yes, yes. That's basically rehired them, that's kind of important.
I'm like, I-
Good catch, Kelly.
I was trying to figure out what I missed, and-
Good catch, you guys might want to take a, the second look on who you put in here. Uh, yes, thank you for pointing that out, I did, I, I had a check, and I didn't get to it. I would, uh, I would entertain a motion, a motion to reappoint, uh, all those officials to the, to the offices that they, that they are now serving.
I would move that we, um, appoint the officials listed on the appointed official sheet, which I believe is the same ones that are serving now in the local-
Right here, yes. Is there a second to the motion?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second, is there any other discussions? You're in, you're in, Beard. Ashley, it's good to go, you're back.
You're back.
Kirk, call and roll, please.
Harris?
Yes.
Knapper?
Yes.
Blue?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Reizig?
Yes.
Probably would've known before now. We would hope, right? Okay, very good. Uh, now, we'll, we're still on the county newspaper.
So I think I was getting ready to move that we, um, designate the Star Herald as the official county newspaper.
Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second.
Any other discussion?
Is there a, is there a statute, does, does the statute say it has to be a, a local paper?
Yes, local and also of a certain circulation within the county, so.
So I could, I could not make a motion for the Western Nebraska Observer in Kipman?
No, we need our-
It has to be within our county.
Okay.
Our constituents to-
Right, our constituents. I don't think Mitchell has a paper anymore, do they, or?
Yeah, I think they still have a little paper.
Someone told me that they closed up.
They did. I heard that, too.
Bob Bush told me that yesterday at church.
I heard that, too. I heard that, too, yeah.
Well, I haven't heard that.
Any other discussion? Kirk, call and roll, please.
Harris?
Yes.
Reizig?
Yes.
Knapper?
Yes.
Blue?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes. Okay, sure I'm not missing anything here. Uh, considered designation of Scottsville County website as an additional method of providing notice of meetings.
And we also post our minutes there and stuff, so.
So we're, we're out there. Canby's, Canby gets the information, too, I believe.
I send them in your packet.
They're always good about doing that.
So the key word here is addition, so it's that and the website, both.
Right.
I think it's like, in preparation of hopefully being able to save the expense of the newspaper publications, and the dead, deadline requirements to get stuff in there.
Let us know when that happens.
Charlie, I'll be the first to tell you, I bet you.
Naco was, Naco was kinda leading the charge on this, to get, um, just as a cost, cost savings, and, and because newspapers are not, so they're becoming less and less, uh, well, not as, not circulated as much as it used to, and the primary source for information is becoming the web, so, Naco put this forward, I think it was last year, and then, you know, maybe in the future, we'll, we'll not be using a newspaper of record.
Very good, thank you, Charlie.
So I would move that we designate the Scottsville County website as an additional method of providing notice to meetings.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any other discussion? Kirk, call and roll, please.
Harris?
Yes.
Knapper?
Yes.
Reizig?
Yes.
Blue?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes. Uh, next item, considered designation of newspaper for 2023 delinquent taxless publications. Please. Okay, I have a recommendation from our county treasurer.
I'll move that the Star Herald is the newspaper designated for the 2023 delinquent taxless publication.
Is there a second to the motion?
I'll second it.
Any other discussion? Kirk, call and roll, please.
Knapper?
Yes.
Blue?
Yes.
Reizig?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Okay, before we move on to the consent agenda, uh, I did mention to a couple of the board members, and Kelly and I talked about it, that possibly on the next agenda that we adopt Robert's rules as our operating procedure for running meetings. I don't know that we've ever done that, uh, but I'd like to see something like that, with, with everybody's approval.
I think that's fine.
Alright, Kelly, if you can make a note, we'll, we'll, on next month, or next week. Thank you. Alright, move down to consent agenda, is there anybody who wishes to remove anything from the consent agenda? If not, I'll entertain a motion for approval, as presented.
I'll move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Kirk, call and roll, please.
Knapper?
Yes.
Reizig?
Yes.
Blue?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Okay, we do have a public hearing, uh, the Community Development Block Grant, and I don't know who's discuss, oh, I do know. You can introduce yourself and your address for the record, please.
My name is Amy Sapp, and I'm a Panhandle Area Development District, and I'm here representing United Way, and, um, this, I'm the certified administrator for C2BG, so, United Way did the pre-application, and it was approved for, um, Scottsville County, and Pat will be helping the process, um, through the application process and doing the administration for you guys. So I've never done this, I just passed my certification in, um, November, Brian is our, um, guru at the certification of-
I had to do that also.
Yeah.
It wasn't easy.
No, it's not. It's confusing.
Congratulations, though.
Thank you.
Congratulations, yeah.
Um, and so, basically, I'm gonna read the project, right, and then ask if there's any public comment?
That would be fine.
Okay, the, um, the city of Scottsville is asking for a grant from the State of Nebraska, Community Development Block Grant, um, for the amount of two hundred and thirty-one thousand, two hundred dollars and eighty-eight cents. Um, the funding will go to Scottsville County, and then will funnel through to United Way, um, nonprofit. Um, the project proposes to address multiple public service issues in food insecurities in Scottsville County that were caused by COVID-19 pandemic. The funding will create increased food capacity through purchase of additional food resources for the food banks, expanded mobile food pantries, associated non-food supplies and equipment to prepare and respond. Um, the response increases the capacity of available source of resources to the food desert that we have here, um, from COVID, which is basically from, um, supply shortages and, um, work, work shortages, um, we can see the shortages of food supplies everywhere in our area. Um, so, uh, this will increase the capacity to serve through the mobile food pantries and meal delivery directly to low and moderate income persons. The project includes distributing food to approximately two hundred household units in January and March, providing food security. In conjunction with the increased capacity to the local soup kitchen and food banks, um, the equipment, there will also be new, non-food supplies to serve and store the food, which will allow the community to prevent, prepare, prepare for and respond for the next pandemic, should there be one. The budget will include for eighty thousand, eight hundred and eleven dollars and sixty-five cents for equipment and installation, a hundred and twenty-nine thousand, three hundred and eighty-nine dollars, twenty-three cents for food, non-food supplies and operational expenses to vulnerable populations, and grant admin fees for twenty-one thousand, which totals the two hundred and thirty-one thousand, two hundred dollars and eighty-eight dollars in grant funds, and this project must be completed within thirty months.
There, there is any of that for any housing development or anything that's also-
Um, no, this is, uh, this is through C2BG.
Right.
Um, it was from the emergent fund, from the COVID funds, and it was originally for the university, and they had extra funds left over, and so this, these particular funds were exactly for this type of-
So it comes to the county, administered from the county, back to United Way?
Back to United Way, and it will go out. Um, I have a spreadsheet, if anybody's interested in the exact dollar amounts that will go out to the public.
Okay.
So, the, the grant application is January nineteenth, so we're working very hard to-
Did you have to use a blue pen?
Yes, you have to use a blue pen.
I remember that part of it.
And, yeah, you know Jerry Darnell, don't you?
Oh, yes.
He's made many mistakes with the black pen, and I've had to call him many times and say, get your butt back in here, blue pen only.
So it doesn't cost us anything, you're just basically-
Correct.
We have to sign off on it as the sponsoring.
You guys, because it has to be a local unit of government that's receiving the funds.
The city could've done it, 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 as well.
The city could've done it, but United Way is, it's, it's for the county of Scottsville.
It's more county-wide than it is just city.
Yep.
Okay, that's, that stands your reason, alright.
So I may need your signature on a few more things prior to that date, but the initial chief elected officials that you all, you, they agreed to let you sign off on any documentation that we need going forward up until that date, I believe.
That's right.
I think we got everything we need to her, but there might be-
And I'll just need your help making sure he does the right-
Yeah, like, we have to have a MOU done between you and United Way, and it has to be a draft, and we're still working on that, so there's some things that will come up in the next week or two, okay?
Sounds good.
Is there any questions from the public?
Well, let's hang on just a minute, we'll see if we can get it approved for you. Alright, I would entertain a motion for approval.
Okay.
I do have a pass discussion, then we can ask questions.
Do, we need public comment first?
Oh, yes.
Yes.
It is a public hearing. This is a public hearing, I'll ask for any comments from the public. Is there anybody that wishes to speak for or against this Community Development Block Grant? Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing. I will entertain a motion for either approval or denial of, of this, uh, application.
I would move to approve the Community Development Block Grant.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second, open it up for any discussion, questions, comments, Russ, did you have something else that you wanted to add? Okay. Alright, if not, Kirk, call and roll, please.
Knapper?
Yes.
Blue?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Reizig?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Okay, very good.
Well, thank you for making my first time pleasant.
Are there things for him to say today?
Was it, it wasn't that bad, was it?
Then do we need a motion for the next one?
Uh, that's, that's one, that's the one that we just did.
No.
No.
Resolution authorizing.
I've got a couple more things.
We have discussed, considered the approval of, of the signature on the Community Development Grant, so I'll need a motion for that.
I would move approval for the chairman to sign the Community Development Grant.
Is there a second?
I'll second that one.
Is there any discussion? Kirk, call and roll, please.
Knapper?
Yes.
Reizig?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Blue?
Yes.
Okay, uh, I need a motion to move into-
I have just a second.
I'm sorry, what?
Can I have just a second here?
Sure. You're gonna have to wait.
I'll wait.
I don't care if you like it or not, you're gonna have to wait.
I have just a little bit of time to wait.
It's all about you.
Okay.
Always is, mostly. Are we ready? Thank you. I need a motion to move into Board of Equalization, please.
I will move, I will second.
Call and roll, please.
Harris?
Yes.
Knapper?
Yes.
Reizig?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Blue?
Yes.
Okay, first item, uh, and Heather would love to speak.
So, I have three different sets of vehicle exemptions. Do you want me to go through them all? Do you want to vote together, or do you want to vote separate?
Yes, I think so, please.
Okay. Um, so the first set that I have is I have twenty fi, uh, twenty-five vehicles for Panhandle Developmental Disability Services. Um, they submitted a list of twenty-eight, there were a few that are not tax exempt eligible anymore, um, so, they have twenty-five that are. Um, the tax loss would be five thousand, four hundred and twenty-nine, sixty. Um, they are used for transportation of individuals with developmental disabilities from home-to-day services, work, doctor's appointments, entertainment, shopping, and recreation, and these are all vehicles that were previously renewed, tax exempt, so I would recommend approval.
Okay, we have a recommendation for approval on twenty-five of the motor vehicle exemptions.
And this is their yearly list.
Excuse me?
This is their yearly list.
I would move approval.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Is there any discussion? Kirk, call and roll, please.
Knapper?
Yes.
Blue?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Reizig?
Yes.
The next one's, uh, consider approval of thirteen more vehicles for regional west medical center.
So, um, these vehicles were also previously tax exempt, there are thirteen of them. Um, the tax loss is three thousand, seventy-seven dollars. Um, they submitted a list of sixteen and thirteen are eligible, and they have various uses.
What are the uses of these?
Um, transporting employees while performing hospital duties. Um, there's three of those, a security vehicle, um, two more hospital duties, maintenance vehicle, um, two more hospital duties, a couple ambulances, another maintenance vehicle, um, there's a trailer that's the maintenance vehicle, and, um, transporting patients in emergency situations.
You denied three of them.
Um, when they hit, um, where they are thirteen years or older, they don't have motor vehicle tax anymore, so we actually have to get the tax exempt plates back, and they, um, just pay a regular plate fee.
So they pay the fee, or we, are we, are we?
We don't pay any, I mean, they're just not exempt anymore. They're aged out, basically.
They still pay a small fee on the-
Yeah, they still pay their registrations. Yeah.
And if you don't, you, you get pulled over. Yeah, I try to hear.
So all of these that we do, Heather, would typically be like 501(c)(3) type?
Yes, and I know that the, I know the hospital has a lot more than sixteen vehicles, so.
There's only certain of them that count for what-
Right.
We do more of them throughout the year, I know that.
More, the, the hospital tries to make all of their vehicles due in January, so when we get a new one throughout the year, it's a new vehicle that they're adding to the list. So these are all, these are all vehicles that have been previously exempt.
Well, I said, I know we've done more of them throughout the year.
We, we do, but they're usually new purchases.
Additional vehicles.
Yeah, they're additional vehicles. These are ones that were classified as tax exempt last year. Okay.
Okay, what's the board's pleasure?
I would move approval of the thirteen motor vehicles for regional west.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Is there any other discussion? Kirk, call and roll, please.
Knapper?
Yes.
Blue?
Yes.
Reizig?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Last one is consider one motor vehicle exemption for Panhandle Daycare Center.
So this, um, vehicle for Panhandle Daycare Center is used to transport children to and from school in Scottsville and Gearing Schools and other educational activities, business-related errands, grocery shopping for the daycare center. It's a total tax loss of ninety-one dollars and twenty cents.
Just a quick question, is that not a private daycare center?
No, I believe it's a 501(c)(3), I think it's a-
They're subsidized somehow.
Yeah.
Are they? Okay, okay. I'll move approval of the motor vehicle for Panhandle Daycare Center. Have a motion for approval, is there a second?[1635.64]
I'll second.
Any other discussion? Clerk call the roll, please.
Knapper?
Yes.
Blue?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Reizig?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Okay, next item is receive tax list corrections. We all had a chance to.
Do we gotta come out of?
We're not done yet.
Not yet.
Oh, no, I guess we're still in there.
I'll make a motion to receive the tax list corrections.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Clerk call the roll, please.
Knapper?
Yes.
Reizig?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Blue?
Yes.
Need a motion to come out of ta- tax equalization.
I'll move to come out of Board of Equalization.
Board of Equalization. That's what I said.
I'll second it.
Any other discussion? Clerk call the roll, please.
Knapper?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Reizig?
Yes.
Blue?
Yes.
Meyer?
Okay, moving on to general agenda items. Consider resolution to allow the treasurer to invest twenty twenty-three excess funds.
Okay, so this is a resolution that I bring to you every year in January, um, giving me permission to invest money whenever we have excess funds. Um, do you want me to read the whole resolution?
Would anybody like it read? We'll leave it up to you guys.
I've read it.
I've read it also. Anybody else?
I would suggest give dispensable reading.
Very good, thank you. Entertain a motion for approval.
I'll move to approve the resolution to allow the treasurer to invest twenty twenty-three excess funds.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Any discussion? Clerk call the roll, please.
Knapper?
Yes.
Blue?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Reizig?
Yes.
Next item is consider resolution to set the twenty twenty-three delinquent tax rate for insufficient funds.
So this is the resolution that I bring to you every year. It allows us to, if we have to endorse and register any county warrants, um, because there are not sufficient funds, it lets us set our own delinquent rate. Um, I set it for point five percent. Our interest right now, um, in most banks is ranging between, um, three and four percent, so I did set it lower if we needed to take a loan on any of the county funds. We don't generally use this, um, but state statute says that we have to. Um, the resolutions that Lisa brings you at the end of June, um, usually override this. Um, she does resolutions to let us borrow from the Keno Fund, um, capital improvements and, and inheritance tax, um, should we have a fund that falls short.
So this is an interest rate we'd be charging ourselves.
Or you would be charging a department that didn't have, like, if you had to loan money from the general fund, you could charge a department for loaning them money, for being in the negative.
So can we charge the crime commission for all the funding we need?
Could.
So you're talking half a percent?
Yes.
I thought you were setting your own rate if you borrowed from the bank. I thought that's a pretty good deal.
No. No.
I won't in on that.
And like I said, it's, it's more of a formality because we are in the position of having the Keno Fund and capital improvements and inheritance that we can borrow from instead.
Okay. What's the board's pleasure?
Uh, make a motion to approve the resolution to set the twenty twenty-three delinquent rate.
Is there a second to the motion?
I'll second it.
Is there any discussion? Clerk call the roll, please.
Knapper?
Yes.
Reizig?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Blue?
Yes.
Now you can make your motion to come out of Board of Equalization.
Well, we are, you're already out. And actually, I have, I just have one more thing, and it's on Board of Equalization. Um, I do need you to approve the county depository banks for the banks that we will be using in twenty twenty-three.
I don't have that under Board of Equalization. Are we okay?
We already moved out of the general, general agenda.
We already moved out of that. Are we okay?
Yeah.
Okay, I thought you said while we were in.
No, I said, we're already out of that. So the banks that we have, um, listed for county depositories this year are First National Bank of Omaha, um, N-Pate Pinnacle Bank of Wyoming, Platte Valley Bank, and Riverstone Bank, and U.S. Bank. So Western States Bank and Platte, or First National Bank merged within the last year, so they're all First National Bank now.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve the list of bank depositories for twenty twenty-three.
Is there a second? Any discussion? Clerk call the roll, please.
Knapper?
Thank you.
Reizig?
Yes.
Blue?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Getting cramping my hand.
Did you give him a blue pen?
No, I don't.
What?
I, seriously, I don't have a blue pen. Well, the color is blue, but I don't have blue ink.
I have blue. Are you being serious?
No, no, I'm ser- that's serious.
I got a blue one. You need to sign something?
I don't think I have one. Here we go.
I'll give you my favorite.
Okay, I'll give it back to you.
No, you don't have.
Don't work real good. I have some of these.
I have lots of them.
Okay. All right, uh. Moving on, discuss, consider approval of ratifying the chairman's signature on the Juvenile Assessment Center CBA grant application. That was a time-sensitive thing that we needed to do, and Kristen is in here.
So for the last seven years, uh, we've applied for the, um, community-based juvenile aid services, um, grant. And, um, this is a non-competitive grant that, um, we received mons for, funds for to, um, run the JAC and also pay for our, um, diversion intake officer and some services that we, um, provide to the youth and families that, um, we interact with through those two programs. I did not change anything. I started in December, and this was due in January, so it's basically what we've been doing for the, the last few years. Um, we're serving kids from eleven to eighteen who are at risk or are in trouble with law enforcement, and we're trying to divert them from the court system and, um, hopefully keep kids off of probation and out of jail.
This, and we've been doing this for how many years?
Seven.
Seven years, correct.
And diversion, we've been doing for like nineteen years, so this just supplements, um, part of, um, what we've been doing for a while.
What's the board's pleasure?
I would make a motion to approve the ratifying chairman's signature on the Juvenile Assessment Center grant application.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Is there any other discussion? Clerk call the roll, please.
Knapper?
Yes.
Blue?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Reizig?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Okay, next item on general agenda, discuss, general agenda. Discuss and consider removing Vera Delaney and adding Kelly Sides to Riverstone Bank account ending, uh, a number also known as the School Fingerprinting Project.
Do we still fingerprint patients' school?
No, we don't.
Then why do we have an account?
We need to, I will get with Lisa, but I have no authority to talk to anybody, and she's the, Vera was the only signer on it.
So we're just gonna give you the permission to do away with it?
See how to handle it.
See how to handle it, sure.
Yeah.
Is there money still left in the account?
Yes.
How much?
Sixteen hundred and something.
But we need to give you authority to make decisions here, basically.
Right.
I'll move that we, um, remove Vera Delana's, Delaney's name and add Kelly Sides' name to the Riverstain, Rivers.
I know what you mean, I know what you mean, it's okay.
Ending in seven zero and, uh, known as the School Fingerprinting Project.
Okay, I'll second. Do we have a second? Is there any discussion?
You're gonna, are you gonna eliminate the account in Kelly's own account?
I don't know what we're gonna do. I just, I need an opportunity to handle it.
That's our money that's in there though, correct?
Sheriff indicated that it was through donations, uh, spoke with Jim Lawson, and he didn't say anything about it. That's, I was asking him where the money came from, so it's been in place since like two thousand and four. Sheriff also says, I mean, they, DNA is a better process anyway, so.
Okay.
However, it can be used, but.
Do we have a motion?
Motion in a second already.
In a second, is there any other discussion? Clerk call the roll, please.
Harris?
Yes.
Knapper?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Blue?
Yes.
Reizig?
Yes.
Okay, discuss, consider offers and updates on the Penn Street Building. Uh, Mr. Kelly has been very good about keeping me posted on where he's at with everything. Uh, right now, there's nothing.
We can't hear you. I'm sorry, we, it's just too.
We need longer mics then, or something.
I know.
Yeah. Uh, seriously, 'cause I, I can't lean over like this. Uh, Mr. Kelly has been very good about keeping updates on where everything is at. Uh, we don't have anything right now. There's a lot of interest, but nothing in writing, uh, which is why I've asked to have it on the agenda, so if something does come in in writing, we can take action on it at the, uh, at the particular meeting that, that it comes in. But right now, there's, there's really nothing to report. I know Jay has showed it last week, I believe, he showed.
Last week or the week before he showed it.
He showed it to a real estate agency out of Colorado, uh, but again, no offers, so that's, that's where we're at with that.
Is, is the building listed like, um, an MLS or TCD site selector or anything like that?
Maybe we should do that.
Well, it's not. I don't know how the company out of Colorado found out about it, 'cause it's, it's probably out on our website. And they, they may have seen it on there, but we don't, we don't have a listed, a listed realtor to list it with.
But can we put it on Zillow or something like that?
Uh.
Free of charge, I don't know.
I'd have to check whether you need to be associated with a, with a broker to do that.
I don't, I think you can do it for sale by owner.
Yeah, for sale by owner.
What? Okay, yeah, you're right, they do. Yeah, so yeah, if you wanna put it out on Zillow, that's fine.
Well, there is a challenge, right?
Double check with Phil Kelly, but I think that's appropriate.
And then double, and then double check that they get it right when they do put it on.
Maybe he already did it.
It's a possibility. It, it really is. That's, that's kinda what I was thinking, that Phil may have, Phil may have reached out to some different, different individuals or companies. Okay, moving on, under public comments, the Board of Commissioners will receive public comments at this time. Understanding it won't take any action on anything, uh, but if there's anybody in the audience that wishes to speak to the board, uh, we'll certainly listen. Is there anybody? Okay, if not, we'll move on to board and staff reports. Uh, the one thing that I have, I, again, I'm, I'm watching the legislative session in Lincoln, they're taping it. And, uh, the, the first, the first person I saw on the screen was our executive director, John Cannon. And you see him there almost daily, uh, doing stuff, so he's, he's over there, and he has our best interest, and, uh, I really, really do appreciate what, what John does for us. But I'm watching, again, right now, they're arguing over silly stuff. I'm not sure I'll get anything done, but hopefully they will. They've got a lot of things to consider. Uh, Russ, start with you.
Yeah, on that, uh, Bridge Act, uh, L B one twenty-four, uh, the Bridge Act money was supposed to sunset or ended this year, twenty twenty-three. I can't talk any louder than that.
Yes, you can. You, it's not even a matter of your microphone, just speak up a little bit.
Did you swallow the phone on there? No, it just went to pieces.
Don't worry about the microphone. I know you can speak.
Well, you're not talking, we're not talking into the mic.
I, I said it's not a matter of you speaking into it, but I know you have a louder voice.
Before we move, can, can we check about getting some longer?
How about if we get lapels?
That'd be fine too, whatever, whatever needs to happen.
So when you sit back like this, even, you've got it.
'Cause I know if they can't hear it in the back.
Especially with these blowers, it's horrible.
And we could turn it, turn it up on the, on the, uh, a bit, but then you get a squeal with it, so you need to be careful with that. But in our normal positions, this is where we sit.
I know.
If the mic is that far away, and if you have somebody who doesn't speak loud, then you're not, it's not, it's not gonna pick it up, and I know it's, it's difficult for people in the back. I understand that. Okay, go ahead.
Okay, well, anyway, there, uh, the legislature's gonna extend, possibly extend this L B one twenty-four to twenty twenty-nine instead of letting it end on twenty twenty-three, so we possibly could get some more Bridge Match for six more years.
Do you have any, have you heard anything on it, Steve?
Just that they were gonna try and carry on, this is the last.
You have, you have nothing to say? Yeah, okay.
So they're trying to extend it into legislative.
Okay. Keep, keep us posted on that, either one of you, if you get any information on that. Okay, Russ, anything else?
That's all I know.
Mike, again, welcome.
I have nothing.
You have nothing?
Nothing.
Nothing?
I got a meeting with, uh, Veterans Council, that's it.
There you go, all right.
And you're attending new commissioner orientation.
Yes, Saturday, yeah.
Good. Where's it at?
Kearney.
Kearney.
Speaking, Kelly, you'll no, you'll notify these, these individuals or these organizations of who they're representative. Thank you, okay.
Yeah.
Mark, do you have anything?
Uh, yeah, for Charlie, that's the, there's a TCD board meeting Thursday.
I got the notice.
Okay, Charlie, you have anything?
Um, today I did a, um, interview with, um, a group called Huddle Up. It's a sports tourism index group, um, County Tourism and Gearing Visitor Bureau, um, went in together to, um, to hire this consulting firm to come to Scottsbluff County and, um, observe, look at, uh, facility feasibility, strategic planning, and then put together a, a s- sports tourism index, um, and it's a pre- pretty neat deal, so, um, just prior to meeting with me, they met with, um, prior gearing mayor Kaufman, they, they'll meet with Brenda and, um, Carla from, um, S- Gearing Tourism. And they'll meet with, uh, then, then they'll come to town, and they'll, they'll meet with more stakeholders and tour all of our facilities, high school gymnasiums, um, college facilities, baseball fields, all that sort of stuff, and, uh, we're gonna put together a, a three to five-year plan and also a five to ten-year plan for, um, just marketing the areas for sports. So it's, it's pretty exciting, um, and then our, the NACO le- legislative, um, meeting is coming up January nineteenth? Or twentieth. Um, anybody can join that, um, I'll be in Lincoln for that, um, but any, any county officials can join that meeting, and that's when we'll, NACO will take positions on the legislative bills that have been presented, um, like this Bridge Match idea, um, and then, um, so that's coming up in Jan-, on January twentieth, and that's all I have.
Is it like a Zoom?
Yeah, so if you stay here, if you stay here, you can join via Zoom, or if you wanna come to Lincoln, um, give you that too.
Okay, very good, thank you, Charlie. Uh, anything, boarder sta- or staff reports, anybody?
I've got some reminders.
Yes.
Um, next meeting, we'll have our detention center tour, and I have the Roberts rules to remind you about. And, um, new county board orientation is January fourteenth, and then there is a board chair workshop again in February in Kearney. I don't know if you wanted to attend that, but I checked the calendar since I wanted to make sure if Mike didn't say anything, I did.
It's a good session. I enjoyed it last time, yeah.
Do you wanna go again?
I will do my best, yes. What, what's the date?
On February seventeenth in Kearney. It's a Friday.
Yeah, I think.
We can, we've got a month, we can.
Yeah.
That's all I've got.
Okay.
Can vice chairs go to that?
Oh, no, it says chair workshop. I can talk to Candace.
Whoever wants, whoever, or whoever wants to go, doesn't really matter.
Never learn any younger.
Yeah, but you go down, I, I, like, last time I went down the night before, and was, I think it was out at four o'clock or something.
So I wanna confirm our next meeting is Tuesday, the seventeenth?
Correct.
It is Tuesday.
Tuesday, the seventeenth. Monday is what, Mark Luther King?
Yes.
Okay, any other staff? Anybody else? If not, uh, entertain a motion to move into executive session for the purpose of addressing personnel issue, and in that, in that session will be the board, Lisa and Angie, wherever she went. There she is. I thought, I thought, so I sent her over here. Okay, so we will adjourn. I don't have any ti- idea what time it is.
I have five seventeen.
Five seventeen, okay.
So did we have a motion?
Motion to adjourn.
Is there a second?
Not to adjourn to go into executive session?
Is there a second?
I'll second.
A motion and a second, call the roll, please.
Knapper?
Yes.
Blue?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Reizig?
Yes.
Okay.
Can you guys hang on just a second?
No, I can't, I've got.
Okay. Then afterwards, will we? Chairperson, why don't they put these together? Not the chairperson. Here's the chairperson, Heather. Kurt, you have to crank. Sorry.
Well, if you had any questions, uh, I just, I know that you do, actually, Carrie Richmond State said that it's not that common. It's every three years. It's not very common, but the foundation is still working in large.
To Mark.
They always run a pretty tight ship out here.
So any of this?
Any idea how long it might be?
Oh, I guess twenty nine minutes.
That's what, are you right?
It's like Cal Inspector, right?
Is that right?
The city of the special citizens mayor?
Yeah.
And, like, they'll, they'll be reading stuff, and we'll be like, I don't know what that says. Thank you. Russ? 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 Do the pin? The pin? I need Secretary of State, it's a separate year, so create your pin. I don't know why. That's for kids. Very good, thank you.